Okay, today is June 27th. The time is 5:31. We are opening the Hyde Park's Temple School District's Board of Education meeting. I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person or persons.
So moved? Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor? I'm assuming there's no discussion. Passed, we're in executive session. There we go.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to return to open session.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
To my knowledge, there are no modifications to the agenda. This time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as printed.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Pride.
Okay, thank you. I'm Aviva Kafka. I'm just standing in for Dr. Fisher tonight. And for pride, we have foremost the FDR graduation and all of the Moving Up Day celebrations. I was fortunate enough to attend two of the elementary Moving Up Days, one of the Haveland Moving Up celebrations and the graduation at FDR. And each building has its own traditions that make them different, but they were all characterized by great pride and emotion. And one anecdote I want to share for anyone who wasn't at Haveland where the FDR celebration was held, the mic went out on the singing of the National Anthem and all of the kids just joined in and sang together. And it actually brought a tear to my eye and some others, just as a real demonstration of, you know, the community. And then it came back on. So that was nice. Also, there was an article in the Poughkeepsie Journal about promising pals. And that was a really great tradition at Hyde Park Elementary and it's carried on to North Park. So I have that. And then the twosome race, which is an ongoing tradition at Violet Avenue, Tommy Nannamakers, the art teacher. And it combines her love of running and wellness. And there's fresh baked bread and desserts for prizes. And two people, an adult and a child, run together a mile and a half each. And there's another article in the Poughkeepsie Journal about that.
Very good.
Is there any other pride?
We know who the team of D and R was. Do not resuscitate. I thought that went in the article. That was really great.
It's pretty cute. I'll pass it on.
I read the article. But yeah, it was a good story.
I just wanted to speak for a moment about the graduation ceremony that was held last Saturday. I was very pleased with the work that was done by our Facilities and Operations people to get that ready in such a short period of time. It seemed like all the technical issues had been worked out and I think that it went almost flawlessly. I was very impressed by the speeches from the students. I thought that the conduct went well and have heard high praise from the public. So I just wanted to commend our staff for putting together such a great ceremony and, you know, it's really a one-off. I mean, when you practice these things year in and year out, you get good at it, but it had to be relocated this year because of the exciting work on our athletic fields. So again, kudos to our staff. Any other pride? Okay. At this time, we'll hear the superintendent's report delivered by an assistant superintendent.
Thank you. So this report really focuses on the summer programs and offerings. And most of them are here in the perspective that comes out of Cora's Temple's office. But I'll just let you know a little bit of what's going on this summer. So there's a model drawing workshop, exploring literacy through the common core, two separate offerings, one for third through fifth grade, one for sixth through eighth. Ratio and portionality workshop, middle school level. There's camp invention, the week-long STEM camp, again. Orchestra camp, choral camp, band camp, the summer bridge program at Ralph R. Smith and the extended school year program, the special education six-week program also. And I'll say, just for extended school year, that we are growing our extended school year program. So we now have three classes of 12-1-1, two of 8-1-2, one of 8-1-1 and two secondary 8-1-1 classes. So really, all of our students who get extended school year are now receiving that service in district. And those who are out of district are continuing in their out-of-district summer. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll hear a presentation from Mr. Kurlander and Chuck Bastian about refinancing options.
Just a second, I have the capital projects update.
Ah, very good. Thank you.
Okay. So I just want to begin by starting out and thanking those folks I typically thank. And that includes the Facilities and Operations Department, management there and all the folks that work in that department that are helping during this time of a lot of disarray over at FDR. It's not disarray because it's really coming together wonderfully. We go up there regularly and check on it. You know, we're checking to make sure that conduits are placed in the right places and, you know, that everything is in place. In fact, they have a secondary, and it's in the report tonight, architecture firm that actually checks on their work. So we know 100% that things are going well. So everything is where it needs to be. But I'll give you a little detail. In your packet, there's an outline if you'd like to follow through or along with me. And Landscape Unlimited holds the main contract, has a lot of good work that's been done. And that includes a retention pond that is 90% complete, the overflow drain from the retention pond running successfully to North Park Elementary property, and that's complete. All the storm drains and catch basins are installed, so all the infrastructure underground is in there and working correctly. The new field has been graded. If you've been out there, you'll see lots of rock being placed and, you know, tamped down. And then the last step is the dust that they put on top. I don't know the right word for that. What is it called?
Item four.
Item four. So it's a real fine material, but that's the last step before we get moving into getting the exciting turf down. Trench drain around the field is 80% complete. And that's along with the edging. And it's so nice to see there's no metal there. It'll be like, you know, it's real exciting. And what goes behind that and how they're positioning them and they're very well secured or being secured very well. So it's a real exciting to see it go put together. The new practice soccer field is at subgrade and is stabilized with straw until topsoil is installed. So moving along with that. And then sod goes on there as the last step for that. Shop put and discus areas at finish grade and is stabilized again with straw. Concrete slabs for the concession stand and the ticket booth have been poured. So I haven't gotten a picture of that, but I promise the next time I do this on the ninth, I'll probably have a lot more pictures to share. The sitting walls and the entrance pillars are being installed now. And the bleacher piers will be completed by 7:5. And that's, I imagine, Elliot, the base with what they'll sit on. And that's concrete work. With regards to Hudson Valley Electric, the new field lights have been installed. Until you get up there, you see there's four proud lights on that field. All underground conduits are just about 90% complete. New panels have been installed and interior conduits have been started. Southern bleachers, their shop drawings are being approved or are approved. Production is in process. Submittals are being processed. Our bleachers are scheduled for start date of 7/11. We're working towards getting contracts, bonds and insurance processed and put in for approval so we can be timely with that. As I mentioned before, Dante Engineering continues to monitor the overall job and certainly with regards to environmental compliance and quality control. So it's nice to know that we have a secondary set of eyes making sure that everything is what it should be. But the good news is all athletic projects are on schedule and within contract budget. We've taken a couple deducts, so we have a little bit more than we started off with. Things like a pipe that could be easier put here than there and save $6,000, those kind of things are happening regularly. And we hope to, you know, certainly put those towards the basketball piece or whatever we decide to do, you know, where we fell short in the first bid, but that's where we are. But, you know, it's exciting that, you know, things are really running well, even with some of the raining that's happened. They're very good about flexing and getting out there to get done what's done. And all I need to hear is that it's on time and in budget and that makes me happy. So, and we're checking and vetting that. So that's good. Another exciting thing, it's on the agenda for this evening, is the scoreboard. We got the scoreboard that we, you know, certainly suggested in the specification and that recommendation's on tonight's agenda. I will say, thanks to Dr. McCartell, myself and Peter Calligris and Mr. Garcia, you know, it was a lot of work to get that one done, to make sure it's specified exactly the way we wanted it and getting that done. So that's a really good thing and I think it'll be very impressive. So on to the boilers. We're just about complete with them. Haveland, all three boilers are complete. Ralph R. Smith, two boilers are complete. FDR, all the boilers are removed. The new boiler construction is in progress as we speak. Violet Avenue, gas man is complete and all the old boilers are removed. Same thing at HPE, gas man is complete and all the old boilers are out of the boiler rooms. Ashley Mechanical, who works with Ralph R. Smith and Haveland, those boilers will be commissioned next week. And again, this project is totally on schedule and within contract budget. We have some additional funds there due to, again, deducts and, you know, good bidding practices. Mangler Mechanical is at FDR. So both the boiler rooms are there that are assembled and the boiler piping is in progress. So we're just about at the end of that. And again, I'm happy to say that this project is on schedule and within our budget. So kudos to all those folks and really to the administrators at FDR who've been absolutely 100% cooperative and great through this process. You know, you take somebody's building, you know, whether it's underground or whatever, you have trucks and you have, you know, lots of folks in and out of there and you have students that are, you know, on lunch, but the, you know, from the monitors doing an extra watch to make sure the kids aren't wandering over there to the, you know, construction management firm, making sure the fences are secured and, you know, all the folks in Facilities and Operations, helping the athletic department to work together to make sure that we had places for, you know, that weren't, you know, typically kind of like the graduation where we normally have been. So, you know, kudos to everybody. And if I forgot to thank somebody, I apologize, but great job overall and we look forward to seeing this progress over the summer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kurlander. Any questions? Okay. Now, I think we're ready to hear the presentation about refinancing options.
I guess I'm just going to introduce Mr. Chuck Bastian, who's here with us tonight. For those of you that weren't watching last board meeting, the first meeting in June, we started a discussion about the possibility of refinancing some of our bonds. And what we decided at the end of that meeting was we got a lot of information, but we certainly had some questions. And we decided collectively to invite Mr. Chuck Bastian here to continue the conversation. I'm sure you'll learn a lot. There's certainly been some things that have changed since we've presented last. But I guess I just want to say that it's, you know, no matter how it works out this evening, it's a good process. I've been asking about refinancing as soon as I see the interest rates go down, I'm going to call Chuck Bastian every single time, right Chuck? And, you know, work on trying to make some savings for our budget. So lessons that have been learned here is that this is a possibility and if it doesn't happen tonight, you know, we've learned a lot through the process. So with that being said, Chuck, I appreciate your driving up from Rochester. I'm sure you had a lot of schools you've visited, right?
Yes.
So with that being said.
Thank you. Thank you. Wayne left me one tidbit to give you for the capital project. When he went through his listing of how the project was going, we had our first financing, our first borrowing for the capital project. And you have a little over a $10 million authorization with your two combined votes there. So we borrowed the first borrowing, the first note, $8.8 million. And the interest rate, in case some of you did not see that, .34% for a one-year note.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty close to free, almost, but I don't think we want that in the economy these days, free money. But that's pretty phenomenal. So one key point to mention to you as a board, that's not easily obtained, an interest rate that low. The reason you got that low interest rate is your credit rating, double A3. You have a very high credit rating for school districts in New York State, let alone municipalities across the country. So great job. Keep up the good work, as you know, because that pays off for you big time when you go to borrow eight and a half, $9 million. That really helps. Plus, what we were able to do when we borrowed that, the timing worked out well, that we also renewed one of your bus borrowings from last year, a couple of your bus borrowings from the prior year at the same time. So that got to piggyback right on that at also the .34% interest rate. So again, timing was everything that worked out perfectly. And as we've seen these last couple of weeks, rates have run up quite a bit since then. So we were in the right place at the right time. One other piece you have tonight besides a refunding bond resolution is your bus borrowing bond resolution for consideration for the recent voter referendum that you had in May. So I believe that's $662,000. So I think that's on your agenda from Bond Council also. So that process has been rolling along very nicely for you. Okay, so let's shift gears to what is a refunding bond and what do you have tonight as a board? I also brought along kind of hot off the press, a report for you with eight pages. I know there's three slides up here, but if you will, let's go through. There's a couple key pages at the beginning of the hard copy report in front of you. And what you'll see on this second page, page two, with some green outline boxes, this is, on two pages, it lists all of your school district bonds that you have on this page. And what you'll see is some of them, we've circled, we've outlined with the green outline, those particular bonds are the ones that we're talking about in this refunding bond for you. So there's three on this first page and one on the second page. And just so that you kind of understand what the codes are there, you'll see some letter Cs to the left of some of those future principal payments and a dash line out there. That's where those bonds have the call provision that starts on them. Because again, they're all fixed rate bonds when we issued those, but we issued those specifically with a call provision for the district. So if they were 15-year bonds, the call provision normally got set at 10 years and out. So those last five years, we can call, we can prepay. And that's the key that we're talking about here tonight on the boxes that we do have outlined there. So there's the one on the second page, three on the front page. Those bonds, and it shows you up at the top of each of those boxes, the call date of those. So we have the very first one, the first page, callable June of 11. The next two are callable June of 15, 2015, and the fourth one is callable June of 16. So the question is, let's see, right now, it's June of 2013. How are we able to prepay or call bonds that are not callable yet? What you're doing when we do a refunding bond issue is you're authorizing bonds to be issued. And those bonds get issued currently, you know, sometime within the next few months, they would get issued, and they get put into an escrow account. Nobody can touch the escrow account. And as the interest payments are due on those bonds that we cannot pay off yet for another couple of years, the escrow pays the interest payment December. The escrow pays the next principal payment and interest payment the next June and so forth until you hit that call date of either June of 15 or June of 16. Then you pay the whole thing off and it doesn't have to continue anymore at those higher interest rates. So the escrow's going to pay off the old bonds. What you pay locally then is the new bond at the lower interest rate. So that's, if you're wondering about these call dates that are still a few years out, that's okay. The money goes into an escrow and it pays off the old guys kind of on autopilot. So that's really what I wanted to kind of show and highlight to you on, you know, everybody asks, well, what about other bonds? Can we prepay those and pay those off? When you get further out in these call dates, 2018, 1920, as you may know, this escrow that we have to put the money into, we have to buy U.S. Treasury instruments and they're only yielding .2%, .3%, .4%, .5% right now. And that's a rate that's set by the IRS every day of the week. The IRS sets a rate for those investments for nationwide, anybody that's doing a refunding. So you buy those investments and you're paying off 5% bonds or 4% bonds. So you're kind of paddling against the current, but you're going backwards. So you really want to minimize that time period that that escrow is kind of going backwards for us. So the further you get out in time, the numbers just do not work. So the numbers barely work for us on these ones that are even out in 2015 and 16. So that's about the edge of our envelope today. But these will all be evaluated probably every couple of months by us as we get closer to those other call dates and see if we can prepay any of those guys. Any questions on the existing bonds?
I just, well, I don't know if it's so much on the existing bonds, but just a quick, I think I understood you right, but just to clarify for everybody. So when you, we go out to bond and then toss this money into escrow waiting for the call dates, it's earning interest, but very little interest in the escrow account?
Exactly.
Okay. So there is some earnings, but not a whole lot?
Correct. And it's a rate that's set by the IRS. Even if we could earn more on the open market securities, buying CDs from the bank or other T-bills, the IRS pulls you back.
Okay.
They pull you right back to a yield limit, they call it.
Chuck, you mentioned we were to the inside of the envelope on these. Can you describe what you mean by that?
Yeah, so here we are in June of 13 and going out to about June of 15, and we've looked at your district, lots of districts, that's right about the edge of where the economic numbers work for you in a positive direction. If we tried to do some runs on bonds that are callable in 2018 or 2019, yes, they're callable, we could build an escrow, but it's not going to be a positive number, it's going to be a negative. So, and even right now, as these interest rates have run up, and I'll show you in a minute, you're on the very edge. So it's kind of a borderline situation right now with where interest rates are.
So Chuck, since we opened these conversations, I think we started at $250,000 with the savings and because of the fluctuations in the market, that opportunity's kind of left us. Is that correct?
Right, right. So I'll go into that a little bit. The next slide, let's see, did I have the interest rate or the line chart on here? There we go, okay. This is kind of interesting. Over the last year, so this is June of '12 out through June of '13, a lot of the folks like to watch what the 10-year U.S. Treasury's been doing, the benchmark. So you can see we're up in the 160 range, hovering 170, 180. It popped up to 2% here, thank you, in early 2013. And as everybody remembers, here we were in December with sequestration, the U.S. government was going to have a hard time with their budget. So interest rates ran up, right when we hit January. So we got up to this new plateau on the 10-year Treasury, 2%. And they came back down here, which is very nice, back in April. May 2nd was our low point right there and we were around a 1.63%. 1.63 on May 2. Here we are June 27, actually, and it's up around a 248. It really shot up this last week, I think, since I printed this chart, or last nine days or so. So today, it actually came back yesterday and today to a 248 at closed, the 10-year Treasury. So that run-up has really hurt in terms of savings. Again, it's nothing that we can do anything about. We're just kind of at the mercy of what the bond market's doing in general. And again, what we're talking about is the municipal bond market, the tax-exempt bond market. But this is similar kind of curve that it follows and this is one of the benchmarks everybody follows. Any questions?
Chuck, I don't, you talk about the relationship of the bond market compared to our ability to pay off our current bonds early. And I don't fully understand the relationship of the 10-year Treasury versus, can you give us a high-level explanation about that relationship?
Okay. Let's see, back here, if we could, if everybody could obviously forecast the interest rate markets, if we could price our refunding bond at the lowest interest rate, that would be great. We'd do well, we could have lots of savings compared to the existing debt that we're paying. Since rates are running up on us, our new bond would be issued at a higher interest rate or, you know, somewhere up in this range, that diminishes our savings. Again, what we're paying now is a fixed interest rate, and we have been, that's stayed, it's fixed, it's not changing. Kind of like refinancing your house. If you, you know, if you can get in at 4% or 3.5% or 3%, your savings just gets bigger. Let's take a look at the, went the wrong way. Let's look at the first slide we have right behind the interest rate chart. And this is, I've run you two scenarios because it's nice to get a spectrum where we are on the edges of where interest rates are. This first analysis page here shows your existing bonds, we have four of them there that we're talking about refunding, consolidating into a single bond. And there is your existing debt service going out through 2022. That's all fixed, that's not changing, that is what it is right now. Those were great interest rates we got on those bonds back then. But what we did was we had an underwriter, Roosevelt and Cross, run us a new run. We said, what if we could pay off those other four bonds and issue a new bond to take its place? The yellow row in the middle shows that we would be at about a 2.17% interest rate. The NIC stands for net interest cost. So that's a pretty good interest rate compared to what we're paying on the old ones. And they were probably up on the top, 4.4 on one of them, 3.95 on one, 3.71, 3.90. So that's great. It's just like at home, refinancing your mortgage, you go to a lower interest rate on the new bond. When we do that, this would be our new debt service in the right-hand column. And then what our savings each year is the green column off on the far-right-hand side. So if we could do this bond and lock that one right in there at a 2.17% interest rate, what you would save this year is $18,000, right out of the 13, 14 budget. So we don't pay Bank A the full amount, we pay Bank B a lesser amount. That's a great thing, we save money on that. It's less money coming out of the tax base or out of your tax levy. So each year, as we go through, a little bit different each year, and in total, it was, again, when we ran this back on June 18th, the savings, budgetary savings was about $127,000. So that gets to be a number, a big enough number that you can understand. Even the $18,000 a year, you know, may not be big in comparison to your levy, but it's a real number. Why pay the bank this if you can pay them that? And it's just more or less pushing some papers through, just like doing your house refinancing. One of the things, another key statistic to show you here, again, there's a lot of statistics, but one of the things to show here is net present value savings, this percentage, why is that there? What does that mean? That's a key statistic that we have to look at because the state comptroller governs this process. If you, as a board, want to do this, that's okay, but the comptroller has the ultimate say over a Board of Education, because we don't have the voters voting on this. This is the board saying, we'd like to do it, but who's going to look out at the end of the day for the whole process? It's comptroller's office. And there's two sections in the local finance law, section 90.00 and 90.10. Those are the two sections in the local finance law that govern this process, whether it's a school, town, village, fire district, county, whoever, doing it in New York State. And these can also be done in other states too, refunding bonds. So what the state comptroller kind of has as a rule of thumb for this percentage up here is about 3%. They'd like you to try to achieve, if you can, at least 3% NPV savings. That's a goal. It's not a hard, fast, written number that they have out there. So they would let you proceed typically, even if you're less than that. So this, you know, they'd probably let go they'd probably let go through. But again, it goes through their analysis and we got to wait for their blessing. If you're way up over that number, by all means, they'd like you to get there as quickly as you can. So even this one, back when we ran this June 18th, a week and a half ago, it's starting to evaporate. And since that was run, again, I put the footnote on the bottom of the page, what was the 10-year Treasury? What was kind of our benchmark when we got this analysis from Roosevelt and Cross? 218, today we're at a 248. So we've lost another 30 basis points. And Jason and I were quick running some numbers. That 127 may be down much less than that.
Yeah, some other things.
So, not, not to rain on the whole parade, but let's go to, there's a second page that has a lot of details. We don't have to get into that. But there's another page in the top right corner, it says, current rates plus 50 basis points. So when we ran this, instead of that 217 in the yellow row, it's going to be when they ran it about a 265, 2.65% net interest cost. So I said, when you gave me the first run, I also want a second run from the underwriter. What if interest rates ran up and they had to, you know, put another 50 basis points on all the maturities going through so that they could sell it into the marketplace? And you can see, our savings have gone quite negative. And that was at 50 basis points. And right now, physically in the market, it's 30 basis points of the 50, not, not all 50 yet. Okay. So that's, that gives us a spectrum of kind of where we might be in the marketplace. Could we do it, even if we wanted to do it? It's got to be positive, and it's got to ideally be 3% net present value savings. You know, it's got to be a, quite a positive number for the comptroller's office to let it go through. Let me pause there again on the numbers before I talk about kind of the timeline of, and, you know, talk about what steps we may or may not want to take as a board. Any questions on the numbers? Okay. The, the other thing to throw out here too, in case you're wondering on one of the questions, I might as well put it out there for you, is, again, just like a house refinancing, there are closing costs. There are financing costs. So those are already factored in and they're deducted out. So those numbers that you see up there is already the net number after the closing cost. And again, that's part of the comptroller's process. They want to see every single thing. They, they get to bless it, or not bless it, when they go through. There's the underwriter discount, there's bond insurance, and in your case, your bond insurance you have to pay is zero because of your credit rating. If we were down one more notch into the single A category, then we'd also have to factor in a bond insurance payment upfront. But because you're up in the double A range, you are as good of a credit as any of the bond insurers out there. So there's no sense having to also spend and buy bond insurance. So again, that's a savings for us because of your credit rating. That's, that's a hard number. That's 30, 40, $50,000 on a $7 million bond. So that's beautiful. The rest of the issuance costs, financial, bond counsel, credit rating, publication, escrow bank. So all those costs are already factored in.
Just quick question, because that, that's where I was going to go with it, with the line of questioning. So those are already in. And I'm assuming that some of those costs are fixed costs regardless of what the dollar amount is, and then some of them are probably a, a percentage cost. How could we, how do we understand, or is there, is there some way that we can understand what those costs are, what the total?
Right. The, the underwriter, if you ever kind of looked at bond sales in the past, they, their fees are charged based on so many dollars per thousand dollars of bonds issued. So if they have to sell $7 million of bonds versus $70 million of bonds versus $700 million of bonds, there's, there's a fee in there, $6 a bond or, or $7, $8 a bond, whatever their, their number is, their cost of selling the bonds. So that's, their fee is directly proportional to the size of the bond issue. The credit rating is also mirrored on the, the size of the bond issue. The rating agencies have breakdowns of a bond between 1 million and 5 million, 5 and 10, 10 and 15. So that's, you know, another eight, $10,000 fee. And we've had that as a school district on our other bond issues that we've had in the past. We pay the credit rating fee too, so that's similar. The underwriter fee, we have not paid on prior bond issues. Those are competitive sales. This is a negotiated sale. Little difference. But again, the reason why is because you go through the comptroller's office and the comptroller wants to see every one of these fees. They don't want anything buried into the interest rate. They want to see every single one of them. Our fee is pretty much fixed, whether it's, again, 7 million or 70 million. There's just the same amount of work we do to do the official statement. Bond counsel has a base fee plus so many per thousand dollar additional piece that they have to put on because they have, their legal opinion is based on the size of the bond issue. The escrow bank is, is, well, you're paying off four bonds, so their fee might be a little bit bigger. One I missed, that's right, is the verification agent. There's a CPA firm that also has to review, analyze all the numbers to make sure everything, and they give a CPA report, just like your auditors' report, that you get to make sure everything balances out and everything's going to work and that the escrow is going to work. So does that help answer the question?
Yeah, it just, it just verifies that it's more complicated than a simple answer.
Right.
There's no way for us to really know. We, we just have to say that's the net and it either works or it doesn't work.
Yeah. And it's, and it's all in the closing documents. It's all upfront. It's, it's right on top of the table with the comptroller. I mean, they, they go through with a fine-toothed comb. And believe it or not, after a pricing, you know, if we ever get to that day, we start off in the morning, the underwriter starts the pricing, you know, selling your bonds about 10 o'clock in the morning. And hopefully by 2 o'clock or so, they've gotten most of the bonds sold. Once that's squared away, it has to go to the verification agent who has to take a quick hour. I mean, these have to turn around fast to then ultimately get to a closing. But verification agent has to verify, and then the email goes back, yep, we're squared away. Then it goes up to the comptroller's office. And believe it or not, there's people in Albany in the comptroller's office working until 5, 6, 7 o'clock at night. And then it gets back down to the underwriter. I mean, and they're going till 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night to pull it all together on the day of that pricing. So it's a, it's kind of an interesting process when you go through it all. Okay. One of the, the last page, I guess I don't have, I don't have a slide for it, but it's a single page of the key dates and the steps for you as a board. And it's similar to some of the steps we've had as a board for capital projects. Really what you have, and I've highlighted the key initials for you is these yellow boxes. The first one, row 5, adopting the refunding bond resolution. And that's scheduled for tonight, if you'd like to. Bond counsel has, has created that, gotten it all set for you that if you'd like to adopt it tonight, you still can. And is there any cost to do that? No. Bond counsel, that's boilerplate. Bond counsel's not going to give us an invoice until we get to the closing. That's really where, where their legal opinion and everything has to come about. But, you know, creating the refunding bond resolution, there's really no cost from bond counsel to do that tonight. So that's step one. If you'd like to do that, you can. And that, that starts step one to get that out of the way. Step two is publishing, which is item 11 on this page, publishing the notice of estoppel. Again, similar to what we've done in the past on our capital projects when you adopt a bond resolution. We have to make one publication in the paper for the notice of estoppel, and that runs for 20 days. One publication. And again, that one is, I don't know, $200 or $300 or so. So again, that's a, that's a second key step that you can do and get done and get out of the way if you'd like to. And what we're trying to do, again, I've just kind of talked about the doom and gloom and, and it's kind of all evaporated away. But if you want to as a board, you might want to position yourselves, adopt the resolution and publish it, get it done out of the way, so that you are ready if the bond market comes back. If it comes back, boom, then we go in and we, we lock it in. So those are really the two key steps for you. So by the time you go to publish, I'm going to check again. And we just, you know, we checked on June 18th, we're checking again today, June 27. By the time you get the publication of the paper in a week or two, and it gets published, we're going to check the market again. If it's come back, we might ask you and decide as a group that, okay, the next two key things that have to get done is we create the official statement for this refunding bond, and we have to go get the credit rating. And that's, again, a couple-week process with the rating agency. It's a few-week process with us doing the official statement. But everybody puts kind of pedal to the metal because we want to get you into market before it starts to change again. So we don't want to start incurring those official statement costs for you. We also do not want to start incurring the credit rating costs for you unless we know that it's come back in your favor. If it's still up where it is, we'll stay on the sidelines. And we'll stay on the sidelines, and we'll stay on the sidelines, because we don't want to incur any more costs for you until you know that it's going to come back and it, and it looks positive. And if it just keeps going up, you know, all you're really out is a couple hundred dollar publication fee.
Chuck, just a clarification. So how long can we sit on the sidelines for, if we were to adopt tonight and publish the notice of estoppel? How, how long does that last?
Typically, a bond resolution's valid for 10 years. Let me, I can double-check that with bond counsel. One of the key things is, you might say, well, geez, go get the credit rating. Let's get that and have that squared away and out of the way too. So the only thing left to get done is the official statement from our end. A credit rating, again, is only valid for a couple months typically, maybe three months. And then it gets too stale. It's, it's too old to rely on for somebody that might be buying these bonds in September. If there was a credit rating that came out for the school district in June, there's too much new information that may have happened that is not reflected in that credit rating. So again, I wouldn't want to get into the credit rating unless we know it's coming back. But again, nobody's a market timer. We're not market timers. So unless we know it's there for you, we wouldn't think about going into that.
Chuck, another clarification. If the bond market was to turn around and we were set on the sidelines for this 10 years with estoppel in hand, how long would it take us to move through the, you know, the, the rest of the process? I know that we spoke about two months. That's what I kind of reported to the board the last time. From, from the newspaper being taken care of, what's the timeline look like in, like a matter of days?
Right. If your estoppel has expired, then the only thing left to do is get that credit rating and the official statement done. Now, a rating agency's going to probably take at least two weeks, maybe three, before they can get the rating out to us. And we probably need at least three weeks to, to get that squared away. If your audit has come out, now there's a new key piece of information I got to get into the OS, and, and that takes a little bit extra. But as of right now, we know your budget and nothing else is new. So your finances are essentially set between now and when your audit comes out in September or October, somewhere in there. So we may be able to turn an OS around in two, three weeks also. So if the market comes back and you say, okay, thumbs up, let's, let's get going. There's a nice amount of savings out there. Let's, let's go lock it in and get it. There's probably about three weeks before we can get to that pricing date and really lock it in.
I thought, step 18, that the interest rate is set, but the verification and other stuff is after that.
Yeah.
So once the, the pricing is set, that's it. It, it's just a matter of when we'll start saving? Is that the idea?
Right. Getting, what this schedule shows is, we're working on the official statement and the credit rating concurrently as your 20-day notice of estoppel is, is expiring. What I'm thinking though, in reality now, is we're not going to do either of those two steps, but we'll let your publication go. So after that publication turns and all of a sudden, if the market comes back for us, then we've got about three weeks before we can get to the pricing, whenever we get ready to pull the, pull the trigger. So if you're publishing on July 5th, 20 days gets you out to July 25th, July 26th. There's step 17. So let's say July 27th, everything looks great. Yep, and that is expired, and that's the day you give us the green light. So middle of August would be our pricing date. And again, the, the way that pricing happens on, here it was showing July 30th, and really it shows July 31st is the verification. It, it's really happening that same day as the pricing day.
Chuck, your, your recommendation, I mean, certainly the, the adopting of the refunding of the bond resolution makes sense. It doesn't cost anything. But shouldn't we continue to monitor the market a little bit before we put that notice of estoppel in? Or is it in our benefit to do so, just in, in the hopes that it does?
For the, for the $200 or $300 cost of the publication, I would say go ahead and do it. And maybe it's two years from now that the market comes back. Maybe it never comes back. It's, at least that key step is done and out of the way so that the only people holding the, the ball, so to speak, is us and the credit rating agency. And we have control over us. We have a little bit of control over the credit rating agency. We don't have control over the calendar. The calendar is the calendar.
Chuck, if I can, I personally have a problem putting something in a newspaper and not acting on it for two years. That to me is kind of shady. To me, to put something in the papers to notify the community that something's going to be happening relatively recently, and two years, 10 years down the road, you're not even going to find that paper anymore. So to me, I'm not too fond of that. And I, I've been looking over all these papers and I, even though you say that your payment is fixed regardless of the amount, I'm not finding it in here. Do we know what your company's fees are?
Oh, yeah. The, the run that I had, I brought it up here. Right, there's a, there's a nice big thick run that the underwriters gave us here, probably 30 pages or so. And right off the bat, in page two, right off the bat in the beginning, they have to do what's called a sources and uses page of how the whole process works. Again, this is everything that the comptroller wants to see and then some. So in the uses, where does the money go? You put a big chunk of it in that escrow, because it's got, it's got to work. It's got to make those payments. The other ones are the delivery date expenses, cost of issuance. Okay, let me give you the three main categories. Cost of issuance, $65,000. I'll come back to that. Underwriter discount, $41,700. These are estimates. Bond insurance is not listed here because it's zero for you. Okay, those are the three categories. So let me come back to that cost of issuance, $65,000. Who is in that? Again, these are the, this is the format that the comptroller wants to see. There's bond counsel, there's OS, there's the credit rating, there's the verification agent, there's the escrow bank, there's the publication. So they're all in that number. And it's not defined today, but as we get closer, if this does go forward, as we get closer, everybody has to define what their number is. So this is an estimate right now that's kind of a placeholder from the underwriters so that they could get us a savings number, an estimate of what the savings number would be. So yeah, that's, that's what we have today.
So today, we don't have a number from you, what you're going to charge us?
We don't have a number from anybody.
Okay, but you're the one that I'm talking to.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if they were here, I'd be talking to them too.
Okay.
So, so don't take it personally. I'm just seeing something that the, the return is minimal. We're, we're looking at putting something in a newspaper in two weeks that we could be acting on in 10 years from now, and I'm just not buying it. I, I got to tell you. But I'm one of seven, so.
Okay.
Tim, I think one of, and I understand what you're saying. And I guess I'd be interested to, you know, I'd, I'd want to see what that, what's going in the newspaper and how it reads. And chances are, some people are going to read it and not, you know, not know what it means anyway. I mean, I, I've read enough legal notices and got done with it and not sure what I, what I'm reading. But I think one of the, I think one of the reasons we might want to do this, and I'm not saying we are, but we might want to do it, is because if we don't, you've got, you know, look, look at the chart and look at the way the market moves, that, and, and believe me, if I could time the market, I wouldn't be sitting here. You know, a lot, a lot of money to be made if you knew where the market's going tomorrow. But it's, it's 20 days. So
No, I realize that, but
It's 20 days more that we have to wait from the time that we decide, you know, if, if we wait and say we don't put it in the newspaper until we think we're going to move forward, then it's 20 days
I understand what you're saying, the timeline. But to me, the, the reason that it's going into the paper is to notify the people that something new is coming on, that that's the intent. And we're circumventing the intent at that point, putting it in now and acting 10 years from now. To me, I'd rather see that 20 days as a part of, well, we're able to track what's been happening over picking the amount of time that it's definitely going up or down, however, we're, we're looking at it. So you can see the, the pattern. But to me, putting something in the paper now for 10 years is, why are you putting in the paper?
I, I don't disagree. I, I mean, I don't think I would vote for it thinking that it was going to be nine and a half years before it would happen. And perhaps, perhaps we want to put some kind of a sunset on it and say, okay, we're voting on this. We're going to do it with the understanding that if it doesn't happen, We're going to do it with the understanding that if it doesn't happen within two years, we, you know, we, we bring it back. And, and I would, you know, it's not like anything's going to happen without us acting on it again anyway, or whoever's sitting in these chairs. It just, it just takes the first step toward that process. It opens an opportunity for us with minimal cost.
Right. The, the bonds that are actually outstanding, there's only nine years of bonds anyway. And the last one is, is a much smaller one. So, I mean, if, even if we, like, the numbers came back, the interest rates came back three years into this or four years into this, there may not even be enough principal left outstanding to try to refund under that current bond resolution that you may have adopted way back in 2013 to even have it work. So there, there is a diminishing point where realistically, it would have to happen within the next one, two, three years. But after, after that, even if the interest rates came way down, it's not going to be enough savings to even probably cover the issuance cost. So, and, and that's all part of the comptroller's analysis. They, they watch the whole thing. So that's prob, that's probably more the real, reality of what's going to physically happen. I said 10 years, but that's, I, I believe, but we'll double check that with bond counsel. I think that's the legal length limit.
So just so I understand, that the timeline from, so, so let's say that if we were to, um, publish the 20 days passes and then, who knows, a year passes after that and, and the market looks like, okay, we want to do this. From the time that we decide to go forward, we're looking at three weeks before the rate would be locked or five weeks?
Right. It depends how fast we can get the official statement done with what your latest financials are.
Okay.
So you.
So it's somewhere between three to five weeks? Is that, is that the?
I mean, I, I would think it could be three weeks. Now, let's say, and we've had this happen before, where you as a school board are going to, in two weeks, get your audit report from your auditors. They're working on it. They've got it just about done. They've given you a draft. They're going back and forth. Two weeks from now, they're going to have the final audit. The underwriters might say, we're not going to go with, with an OS now if two weeks from now, we're going to have your final numbers. Let's wait. We're going to wait two weeks until that board report comes out, you accept it. Then we put the financials in. So that, you're right, that could be a five-week process. Or they might say, I know it's coming in a month and a half. We need that in there. Again, this is where you start to get into some of the SEC rules in terms of either, you know, hiding information or keeping it very transparent out there. City of Syracuse had a big problem years ago on something like that.
We're not going to have audited results until September, you know, that the board's going to formally accept and have a full report.
Right.
That's the reality.
Right.
And that's, that's pretty standard every year. So.
Right.
You know, and I, you know, I wouldn't tell anybody any differently.
Right. But we might be August 20th, and all of a sudden, the rates are phenomenal in the marketplace. And you guys as a board say, good, let's go in three weeks. Let's get there to the pricing, Chuck. I say, okay, we probably could, but the underwriter might say, yeah, but my buyers of those bonds are going to want your financials, so we're going to wait until they come out, till the auditor gets their stuff done. Can we get the auditors going any quicker too?
Yeah.
But I've, I've seen that happen in the past, so I'm just throwing that out as one example.
Yeah.
So at that point, once we say, okay, let's go, what are we committing ourselves to at that point? And is there, you know, is there another time when we get the opportunity to say, wait a minute, you know, market's all of a sudden gone? I mean, you know, looking at this report, 45 days, the market has gone from, you know, the low on May 2nd to, uh, you know, substantial increase.
85 basis points since May 2nd, yes.
In about 45 days.
Right.
So do we, is there another opportunity there where we can say, you know, hold up? And at that point, what have we incurred for cost?
Yeah, and that's, that's what you're doing now. So this is step one, and, and I was thinking that that would be roughly that $200 or $300 publication fee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're on the sidelines. We're waiting, we're waiting. Things come back and you say, okay, Chuck, let's go. Three weeks or so, we can get the official statement done and the credit rating. So now, we put the pedal to the metal to get that official statement done. So as each couple of days go by, we're getting it more and more complete. So we're incurring some, some cost for you over that, that three-week period. And the other piece is the credit rating. Now, what the rating agency does, they're starting to do some research, getting ready for a credit rating call. We have our credit rating call with them and the district. And a couple of days later, they come out with the rating. When the rating is released, that's when we owe them their fee. When the rating is released, that's when we owe them their fee. So we might have the credit rating call, and later that afternoon, the market goes haywire. We'll call them right back up and say, stop your process. We don't want the rating. No cost for the rating. So it depends when we stop the credit rating process. We're, we're more or less the, the linear one. Your publication that goes in the paper, you pay that one. The credit rating comes out, you pay that one. We're kind of the, the increase in cost as more of that official statement gets done and we get into the process. But yet, you're right, we're watching. With, with this kind of a volatile market, we have to watch it every day with, with the underwriter and report back to you because you're right, we don't want you incurring costs and there's, there's no sense of doing that.
Yeah, um, you know, Tim expressed discomfort with the legal notice or publishing it and then saying, oh, you know, maybe we'll get around to it in the next seven years or so. Um, but just, just for probably everybody's benefit, my own since I'm asking, in, in about two sentences, can you say what a notice of estoppel would say? I know there's going to be a lot of legalese and mumbo jumbo in it. But what is it basically, what is it indicating to those who are picking up that paper and reading it? What, what's it basically saying?
It more or less is your bond resolution.
Okay.
So you have, I don't know, it might be a 10-page bond resolution again because it has to recite the four underlying bonds.
It's basically saying we're going to ma, maybe considering refinancing if the, if the conditions are correct.
Right. It shows that you've adopted a refunding bond resolution, um, and that we would like to proceed if we can. Again, the, the market kind of dictates that and the comptroller ultimately dictates that.
Right, right.
So you might say, hey, I want to go. The market might say, great, this is fine. We go to a pricing. It dies right there on the table.
Yeah. And that's why I, I don't necessarily have the discomfort that Tim has. I appreciate where he's coming from, but I, I also understand that, you know, you have to put in a legal notice. But I also recognize that it's really no different than getting the mortgage company or bank excited that you're thinking about refinancing. And then you tell them, nope, sorry, not interested in walking away. You know, it's, it's, it's based on the conditions. You know, and if, if they're not favorable, we're not going to do it. And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a little different than saying, hey, we're borrowing $10 million because we need to spend $10 million on something. This is a, a little bit of a different transaction. Already borrowed the money. We're just looking to pay less for it, so.
Right. I think last time when I refinanced a, a home mortgage, you're right, I had to pay for some other survey and appraisal.
Right.
Different things like that.
I just did it two years ago myself, Frank.
Yeah. So before you can get to that rate lock with the bank, you incur some costs upfront yourself and you hope that those people move along and the title searches or whatever they do. And you keep calling them every day, you done, you done? Because I got to lock that in with the bank. And the bank won't let you lock in until you get those things on their checklist.
Can we reset? So if we were to do this today, it would cost us money. Is that correct?
Today, no.
Six eighteen current rates, isn't, aren't those negative numbers?
That's for the 50 basis points.
Right. And we're pretty.
We're at 30 of the 50.
Right. And the comptroller, that, that's the whole key at the end of the day. Sorry if I didn't say this. But a comptroller is not going to let this one go through at a 2.65 because your negative NPV, your negative savings, they would never let that go through. They may not even let the prior page that I had up there go through also. This one is starting to get thin. They might not let that go through. I mean, we're going to pre-work that with them in advance, check that with them. But at the end of the day, you've got to have savings or it's not going through.
Well, that's, I don't understand over, I mean, I recognize it's over a number of years, but $127,000 of savings doesn't seem thin to me. I guess per year, it might be a little thin, but.
Right.
I mean, I would find it hard to believe they would object to that unless there was a risk that it was going to evaporate somewhere.
Right. And, and that's generally why they let it go through. Technically, they, they have to let it go through if, if you get $1.
Right.
Which seems very ridiculous, but technically, they have to. What they want is you to go after these when you can get at least 3%. Anything less than that, they're going to start asking us, you know, everybody in the whole process, is this as, as good as it can be? Is this the best structure of the bond? And they, they really start lifting every stone, which is good. That's, that's their job.
Chuck, with respect to, uh, you know, spending funds and, you know, not having any return, at what point does the comptroller's approval of where we are fit into, you know, credit rating, official statement, so on and so forth? Where, where, where does he come in or the, you know, in the process?
Their, their technical approval is at the, um, the end of the day on the pricing. So that's where they either say yes or no. Now.
That's post, to clarify, that's post official statement and credit rating.
Correct. But we know, I mean, the comptroller's been through this enough, certainly with school districts. I think we've done about 110 of these in the last two years. Um, and that's just our firm. Um, there's a lot of other folks doing these too. So comptroller's office with these low interest rates we've had these last few years has been very busy with a lot of these refundings. Some phenomenal savings, some very thin savings. So they know what questions to ask and when. And the underwriters and we know when there's something that's maybe not a high enough savings, it's just going to fly right through. So we want to definitely, in this case, that 127,000, we would want to pre, you know, kind of in advance, work that with them to make sure that this is okay. If they've got questions, let's get them out on the table now, get as much done ahead of time. Because you're right, we don't want a whole bunch of questions after the pricing has occurred. And Roosevelt and Cross essentially has all your bonds sold. All of a sudden, the comptroller comes in and says, oh no, this is all different. If, if they did that, that's a, that's a lot of wasted time by a lot of people. So you're right, that, it's not going to get to that point where, um, they would kill it that far afterwards.
So I guess what, what's on the table now, Chuck, you know, and so, trying to summa, summarize this, is do we move forward with the resolution and the estoppel? Or, you know, do we cut it here, take more time to think about it? Um, I guess that's where we, where we need to land as a result of this second part of the present, you know, two-part presentation.
Are you asking for a vote on this right now?
No, just a, the general understanding because it's on the agenda whether or not to.
There is a vote later for it.
Later?
Yeah. One question I have is what, what are the costs of moving forward at this point?
With, with just this resolution and the estoppel?
That's right.
Debitly $300, $400 for the, for the estoppel and, and nothing for the resolution. So for a cost of $300, $400, we have the opportunity moving into the future to, like Chuck said, sit on the sidelines. You know, from my perspective, I would recommend we, you know, we do that because it's, it's certainly worth it. Could change, could not change. But, and, and, you know, at any rate, we've discussed it, explored it, and, and we, we put that chance out there and it's good for a while. So, um, if the opportunity comes up again, we just pick up where we left off. Um, and I'll be certainly monitoring the rates and the opportunities with Chuck, you know, into the future as we've done in the past. Ask you every six months, right?
Probably every month.
Yeah.
And the, the advantage of adopting the resolution tonight as opposed to waiting until we see the opportunity is that it shortens the length of time that it would take us in the future by roughly three weeks. At least, at least 20 days plus any, um, time it takes to get it back on a board docket.
Right.
Get it approved, get it discussed. I mean, it could, it could be a, up to a five-week head start on the process in the future.
Or more.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Depending on where we fall in reference to any of the other reports that they're looking for.
Sure. Is there any?
My only opinion is, I, I think it's going to get worse from before it gets better. And I think it's going to be quite a while before they come down again. So I also agree with Tim. I, I.
How are we doing this? You know, at the last meeting, we're agreeing. What is going on?
I know. This is, this is scary. But, um, even though it's only $300, I don't think it's worth it. I believe it at that.
I think it is worth it myself.
That legal notice seems very similar to the process that we have to go through when we are embarking on a capital project where we need to worry about seeker. Now, we've been through that process where we declare ourselves the lead agent on a seeker. And that's a legal notice, and it's made basically to say, here's our position. We think that we're lead agent on this. Does anybody disagree with that? And the legal notice in this case is simply going out to the public and it's saying, we think that we have the right to refi, refinance our buy, bonds according to a schedule that's favorable to us. Now, it seems to me that most taxpayers are going to say, yeah, that seems like a really good thing to do. You should have that power. So I don't see this as an issue where we're giving ourselves power that's going to be forgotten in three to five years. This seems like a right that we should have to perform our job.
I have to agree with that. I think that not doing this, we would not be doing our job. We would not be taking the steps.
If we did it a year ago, I agree with you. If we did this a year ago, yeah. But it's gone way up in the last year. And not only that, in the last two weeks. I mean, since the announcement the Fed made, the thing's gone nuts. So, I mean, I, I can't see this going, going down.
It's not a real big loss if it never goes down. If it goes down and we haven't done it, we could screw ourselves out of it. I don't want to do that.
Only five weeks worth.
Uh, and again, my concern is this legal notice is there for a reason. And that's for the public to be able to say yes or no for something that's happening right now, not five years from now. And so five years from now, somebody comes in here and says, what are you doing? And we said, oh yeah, we approved that five, five years ago. What are you talking about? Why didn't you read the paper five years ago? That is ridiculous.
I don't understand why anyone would walk in here five years from now and say, why are you saving us money by refinancing these bonds?
Because maybe we, in fact, we've had other issues where we were thinking about refinancing things and we decided against those issues. I can think of buses in the past that we decided not to refinance because it didn't make a whole lot of sense.
But we're, we're not locking ourselves into refinancing. We're giving ourselves the opportunity to do it more promptly when it is a volatile market and we can strike while the iron is hot. Instead of waiting longer and losing the opportunity. I personally would find that more responsible.
In that five weeks where you, you're going to gain X amount, in that five weeks, it can go up even higher.
That's right.
So you, you're, you're throwing $300 away or, or use $300 today, whatever, for something that, it, it's a roll of the dice. And to me, it's, it's not acting in the transparent manner that this board has been so prideful of.
I think it is. I think we're telling everybody that we may do this sometime if it's favorable. I, I can't see what's wrong with that.
I don't understand why, why this doesn't look like something that a board that prides itself on transparency does.
Because this may, this may or may not happen years from now.
Or it might happen in two months, three months.
Exactly. So in two or three months, we decide we want to do something. And then you have the, the public can say yea or nay, which is their right to say, whether we agree with them or not. That's their right to say it because that's the information that they have.
No, that's not right.
No, they don't.
They, they can tell us their opinion. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's all I'm trying to say.
Right.
They, they can weigh in on their opinion and try and sway the board.
They, they already voted to approve to borrow this money. We've already borrowed it.
We're just trying to save money.
Hey, if we can save money, this is what this is about.
Mm-hmm. Or.
Or do nothing.
Or.
And lose it.
Because if it doesn't, if, I mean, what I mean do nothing is put a resolution out there as a, as a placeholder. And if the terms aren't favorable, we're not doing it. It's no different than looking at the interest rates, you know, at different mortgage companies and banks and saying, I'm not going to do that.
Why do you think that the government has this notification that has to be in the paper? For something to be actioned on five years from now? I don't think so.
It's, that's only to deal with the people that hold the bonds. It's, it's, it's not, the general guy in the street.
The people that hold the bonds aren't reading the Poughkeepsie Journal.
That's what the legal notice is for though. It's not really for the, the average citizen of the school district.
Right. It's, it's what the bond counsel uses for their, their legal opinion, similar to our current capital projects. When you adopted that bond resolution for, for the athletic field and the boilers, you went through the same thing. Bond resolution, published a notice of estoppel. And what that does is that then, once that 20 days expires cleanly, that gives the bond counsel the ability to give a clean legal, which is what the bond market needs. Otherwise, again, they're not buying your bonds. So it's just a, a legal step that's set in New York state law, section 81 in the local finance law, that's called this notice of estoppel publication. that's called this notice of estoppel publication.
And why is that there?
To make sure that you've done all the correct legal steps that you need to do. You, town, village, whoever it is doing a bond resolution. And if by chance there was a step, some sort of a legal step in that process that was missed or not done in the proper order, that gives a 20-day window for the public to say, "Wait a minute, you missed a step."
Which we're not gonna have at this point. And if we do it now, the public doesn't have that, right?
It, it only is this 20-day window when you publish. But what, what you want as a board, and that's why we do it with our regular project bond resolutions, is if, it gives the people the 20-day window and forevermore, hold your peace, because you do not wanna have somebody, three years after we've sold the bonds for our athletic facility, to come back and say, "Oh, you missed a step." Now, all those people that hold the rest of the 15 years of that bond are gonna start the lawsuits. So this stops people from trying to challenge it after the bonds have been issued. So the, the legal opinion that the bond attorneys, that's what they have to have, to give a clean legal, so that you can have people buy your bonds, give you interest rates like that .34% on the note. You don't get that without that legal, that notice of estoppel having expired. That's why we do that step. It's a legal requirement with bond council, and, and it's required by the bond market, really.
If it's, if it's interest to the bondholder, that's the only person that stands to lose in this theoretically, are the bondholders. You know, because I'm collecting and I'm using very round numbers to keep the example simple. I, I've bought a bond for 15 years at 3%. Now, you're telling me you're gonna call it, and it did have a callable provision. I knew that when I bought it. Now, you're telling me you're calling it and, and you're gonna pay me, you know, and it's gonna get called, so that you can pay 2%? You know, boy, I lost out on that. Well, not really, but I mean, I didn't get what I thought I was gonna get out of that investment, 'cause you're paying it early. So that's what the legal notice is for, is notifying that particular bondholder, "Hey, look what they might do." That's all. It's not, it's not a legal notice to the general public who's, you know, in Hyde Park, who doesn't hold these bonds, to say, "Hey, what are you up to, school district?" That's not really what it's for.
But it, it takes away the bondholder's notification that something may be happening because we're not acting on it for several years.
That, that's, first of all, there's a callable provision, so that's a risk they knew when they bought the bond. That if there's a better interest rate to be paid-
I'm saying if we, if, if you're not selling the bonds, okay, for several years, there is no bondholder who's gonna act within those 20 days.
The other piece is similar to the, the capital project vote that you've had now, and you adopt a bond resolution. We may not issue the note like we just did this past June, and the bond might be next year. So we're a year or two after even the voter referendum, by the time we have all the approvals from the state to do your capital project, and that by the time you need money. So even on your current capital project, it's, it's a little different, but it's some, similar to the same process.
Yeah, there's a delay in the process.
Yeah.
From when you adopted your bond resolution initially.
Matter of fact, that's, you know, my previous terms on the board. I remember you'd be voting a bond resolution late in the next school year. "What the heck's this for? Oh, that's what we did last year. Oh, that's right." You don't even remember, you know, because it is almost a year, you know, sometimes before you go out to bond for something you just got approval for.
Your boiler project, the voter referendum was December 6th of 11. The bond resolution was January 18th of 12. And we just did the first borrowing, so we're about 17 months out from when you adopted the bond resolution as a board for the boiler piece. Just again, because of the approval process with the state for the capital project format. But you're right, it gives the people the notice, "Hey, we've adopted a bond resolution. Some point in time, we're gonna need to borrow for the project, once the project gets underway."
Is there any further questions or discussion? Mr. Bastian, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Yeah, if anything, it was very instructive. I mean, we learned a lot, so.
It's, it's a tricky topic, but you're right, you can sometimes compare it to a house mortgage. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, we'll hear an update from Mr. Kurlander on the master facilities plan.
Okay, so tonight I'm gonna speak to the board and public about our master facilities plan and a little bit about what that is, what it means, where we are with it, and the successes and things that we've learned this year throughout the process. I would say about every five years, we look to entirely review the district for its capitals, capital needs, and inner budgetary needs for any kind of work that needs to be done on buildings, grounds, you name it, we've reviewed it. And we had a goal. And the goal for this year was to completely update this master facilities plan and share the input with all the folks that, you know, it touches everybody from, you know, from a building janitor to the secretary, to the board member, to community members who use buildings. It really touches and hits on everybody. So it's a very involved process with, for which we need to reach out to lots of folks, get their input, and, you know, eventually bring back to you, the board. So we're almost at the end, and wanted to give you an update, 'cause it is year's end as to where we left off. So the timeline, in September, we started to conduct building tours. Mr. Hubel and myself went through each building, and in each build, in each building, we had like a, kind of a building team. It differed in each building, but a lot of times, there was certainly the, the head custodian of that building, followed with the principal, and then sometimes some teachers joined us, teachers aides, building, building representatives from their teams. It was really a, a nice process. So there was really a lot of feedback and back and forth, so that happened in the early fall. From this point, we took all those, all that feedback data and started with our first draft of the master facilities plan. We then took it to all the directors in the, in the district, and we worked with them to get their input, because, you know, certainly their programs, or programmatic needs for buildings need to be updated there. And then we met with the project team to review for the first time, and we set that first draft out in preparation for the SAFE committee, which, which met in January, to add safety-based projects. And certainly, the all administrative team sat down with this entire thing to do an overall prioritization. So we took a couple hours in our all admin meeting, which we have on a monthly basis, and reviewed each and every topic that was there, together as a group, and then came up with a, a system, which you'll see in a further slide. From that point, we again met with the project team to review what, you know, what happened there. Our final priority review with the all admin, it was a, kinda like a second meeting to follow up on what we did in the first, after all the changes were made. In April, we reviewed the draft version in the Facility Steering Forum, and we revised the master facilities plan with the Facility Steering Forum. And then we added an additional meeting, so that happened from March, April, May, and June. And then we were going to update the board tonight. And then, you know, our next steps being presenting a finalized plan to the Board of Education in early fall, or late fall. So the master facilities plan is a living document, can change at any time as needs change, as things happen, as mandates require, or, you know, circumstantial things happen, roof goes through, that's gonna really go up the priority list if that's the case, 'cause we need to have roofs on our buildings. So, but it's referred to as a living document, because on a regular basis, facilities and operations, and myself, and the administrative team are reviewing and updating. And the project that have not been completed are moved to a completed section, so there's always movement, and, and that's why we call it a living document. There's two parts to it. There's the capital part, which is a, you know, the part of the document that's prioritized district-wide plan to improve or upgrade our facilities, and consists only of large projects that would qualify for state-end funding. These are long-term projects that are subject to community approval. As a capital project, it's certainly a vote. The other side of it is the district-wide renovation and improvement plan, otherwise known as the DRIP portion of this document. And this document is comprised of all the smaller projects that can be done in-house in, in our budgets. So of course, those need to be prioritized, and, and the group needs to discuss and understand what is important, what needs to happen sooner than later. You know, what's, what's, what's the biggest prior, prioritized list that we could possibly come up with? And that's agreed upon as well. The projects are identified in several ways. Facilities and operations staff do regular inspections, and it's really come a long way in the time I've been here, where repairs and improvements are needed. We're moving to a much more proactive and a way of having actually our own staff reviewing the buildings, rather than it coming back through, you know, a building administrator. So this is really taking a turn there, I look forward to that. Building administrators toured their buildings with us, as I said, and identified all the projects. I said, "Put your wish list out there," and they did. They certainly did, some really, really did. But, you know, we went through that together as a group, so even if there was outlandish things that wound up on there, they got on there, and they're recognized, and that's important. Whether it's something that's aesthetic, or something that's really, really critically important, you know, to, to take care of, they're on there, and they're in there. So, and then we have the, the architects' building condition survey, which is also incorporated, and it's important to get the infrastructure things, you know, that probably the normally folks that are in the buildings aren't thinking about. So you have everything, you know, and I always said it, it's a building administrator, secretary, and the head custodian knows that building better than I'll ever know that building, so it's important to get their feedback, and that's exactly what we did. So as you'll see, we're getting a lot of feedback as to what needed to go into the document. And then the process, once the administrators identified all our projects, a new list was distributed during our all admin meeting, as I mentioned before. And then we had justifications. You'll see on the left-hand side, it was given a justification of number one, two, three, or four, and that's certainly health and a safety, efficiency, programmatic needs, or aesthetics. So health and safety has a direct impact on the well-being of students, staff, or community. Efficiency brings about direct cost savings or improvements that makes fiscal sense. Programmatic needs directly affect students and programs. And four is aesthetics, improvements to appearance. So the group together either put a justification, and then on, on the right-hand side, you'll see a timeline. Immediate was an A, and that's in the next one to three years, should be completed in the next one, three years. Important and necessary should be completed in three to five years, and then improvements on renovations completed in five to seven years. So, you know, if you gave, if you had a health and safety, and it was an A, it was probably something really important. If it was a, you know, something that was aesthetic and a C, it kinda falls down on the priority list, and that's how, you know, we identify. Having done a real large amount of capital project work in this district in the last eight to nine years, it's time that we reevaluate this and really kind of catch up with ourselves and understand where we stand, what needs to happen, regroup, close out projects, and so it kinda fits in, you know, in a perfect time, where we, you know, we're like, on our last thrust of, of large capital project work. And I believe so, just about $45 to $50 million that we've done in an eight-year time span. So a little continued process. The next time this information is given to the project team, they reviewed all the proposed projects. Project team consists of our architects, our engineers, our construction management, our facilities and operations administration, myself, superintendent, and other interested folks get together and really, really process this, review it, go through it, you know, send it out early for, for feedback. They also incorporate projects identified by the most current building condition survey, as I mentioned before, so all those infrastructure things. The architect on a semi-regular basis has to do an entire update of, of our district, at a cost, of course. But it really helps us to identify where we are with things. Project team, they also can combine projects. So we start to see, you know, if you're looking at it from a, from a, you know, the overall perspective, you're starting to see, hmm, there's a parking issue at this, at this building, there's a bus loop project at this building, and you can kinda start to put them together. And if they're all like, you know, A1s, you start to see, you know, how products get developed and put into place, or at least conversations opened up for where we move. So those trends are identified and grouped. Project team passes the draft document on to the Facility Steering Forum, and as I said, during that March to June time, that's exactly what had happened. But I think the, what, what happened is, the document's huge. It's, you know, it's, it's too full, you know, it turns into a, you know, tremendous binder at the end, and there really is a lot to be taken in. So four months wasn't really long enough for, for folks to get a good grasp on it. So at that point, we decided that, you know, we need a little more time, and that's kinda where we are. So that's kinda explained here. So we plan to continue the development of the master facilities plan in the 13, 14-year to make sure that the community is as involved and embarked into this process as we all have been all year. Better to have, you know, a, a document that's 100%, you know, still living, but 100% vetted by the administrative and, you know, when I say administrative team, it really incorporates all the building people, 'cause they were met with as well. The teachers, the assistant, you know, the, all the, all the folks that are in a building are met with on almost every case, to identify projects for the principal, to work on, or administrator, to work on with me and facilities and operations department. So it really is everybody, but that community piece is, is huge. It's really, you know, the taxpayers that pay the taxes to make these things happen, they vote on our projects. It's really important to make sure that they have as much vested into this document as we do. So with that being said, that's where we are, and I'll open up for questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kurlander?
Yes, Wayne. Your building condition survey, when was that last done?
It was done in 2012.
2012.
It was, 2011, 12.
Eleven, yeah.
Five-year plan, right?
Yep.
Okay, and what was the final overall building condition rating on it? Satisfactory, or?
It was, it was a range. At some, some places, it was not satisfactory, all the way to, to very satisfactory. I think it depends on which pieces we've done. But for overall, our infrastructure is in pretty good shape.
So at that point, there were no red flags?
There were a couple. Yeah, some of our things like, Elliot, I'll turn to you, things like our drainage, like at Havlin Middle School, the-
Drainage.
Not the drainage, but the septic, so some things like that, it's like a red flag. Our, our heating systems, some of them, not so much the boiler, which we're doing now, but the pipes that bring the water, you know, through, which we're working on. So there, there were things that came up. Elliot, do you have anything to add?
We have a couple of end-of-life items, for example, the fuel-
Mr. Garcia, could I ask you to step up to the microphone?
Sure. Good evening. In addition to the very noticeable things that Mr. Kurlander was referring to earlier, we do have some end-of-life concerns as far as materials or structural items that are nearing the end of their usable lifespan. For example, the petroleum bulk storage tanks or the liners therein at the FDR High School are probably within two to five years of end-of-life. Same with the septic tank that Mr. Kurlander referred to earlier at the Havlin Middle School. So there are certain things that we're looking at and trying to determine, is it a two-year thing, is it a five-year thing, and, and plan it before we have that absolute failure when, when it would become an emergency.
So I, I mean, just to kinda close the loop on that. So the point is that those items are in the report and, and weighted properly based on, on their need for, for action.
That's correct.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if I have any questions, as much as I've got some comments, and I think, you know, Wayne, you did an excellent job. You know, the, the point, I think in hindsight, in this whole process, probably the thing that we needed to bring more of, and I think the plan is to bring more community in or try to get more community involvement, because as you went down through your list of all the, all the stakeholders that you've, you solicited input from, administrators, you know, people who are intimate with the building and they know what they need, I, I haven't heard that we, that you ever went to parents. I mean, we, we've got community members who were on the committee, on the facilities committee, but some of them are parents, some of them are, I mean, unfortunately, the vast majority of them, I don't think are in the buildings on a regular basis. And for this document, I think the value of having this document helps us to create a roadmap of this is what we need to be doing for projects, large and small, going forward. And it, and it's better to have a conversation of what the priority of those projects are early so that you can just administer and get into the project quicker, whether it be a capital project or, or a smaller repair. And I think what we've left and what we've seen in the last facilities committee is that there's still a lot of community discussion about the list, and well, why is this rated here, and why is this rated there? And you're always gonna have some of that, but I think what we really suffer from is not getting enough community involvement. And maybe it's reaching out to PTA, you know, reaching out to, to parents who are true stakeholders in the fact that their kids are in the building, and, you know, it seems like that may be a place to try to, to get more input. And, and only because that, then they're, they, they gain ownership in this document, in this process.
I think, and it's an excellent point, what we are thinking about doing, 'cause facility steering, we're taking a, a momentary pause on capital projects, we certainly have a lot going on right now. we certainly have a lot going on right now, to focus in on this document and try to solicit other folks that may not really have the history to know that, but would really be interested in this document. And we continually try to solicit new members. It's a difficult thing to do. Sometimes we get people in there for a couple of years for a special purpose, and then they're out. But we have a core group that really is representative of our community, and those folks really have, they're the go-to people in the community. So if somebody wants to know about facilities, they go to that person. So there is an element of there, but it's inconsistent.
Yeah, I think we're missing, we're missing a big part. And take nothing away from the people who have committed the time to the facilities committee, the taxpayers. I think that we need, we need to cast the net a little wider, and, I mean, there were some good points brought up. I mean, the teachers or parents walk into the building and they notice perhaps mold on the wall or chipping paint, or, you know, and these are important things to them, but those of us who work closely with these buildings are just too close. We don't see it. You know, we're looking for, you know, making sure the heat's on, not as much worrying about, you know, whether there's peeling paint on the windowsill.
That was just an example, right?
That was just an example.
There are no schools that have mold in it.
It was purely an example, but the idea is that everybody, everybody comes with a different set of eyes.
I get it. I just didn't want people to think there's mold in the building.
Thank you for that clarification.
So it sounds like it's, the master facilities plan is currently in a draft format. However, it also sounds like there may be high-priority work that we should start to consider doing. How, how do we proceed forward when it's still in draft format and under review?
There's nothing that rose to like, has to get done right now, you know, at least as far as I could see or the architect or Elliot could see, that, you know, even if there was, that would be part of this presentation tonight, that this rose up to the level like, you know, we don't have a bathroom on the second floor at Havlin, you know, something you'd absolutely need. You know, but there are A1s out that are in that list that should be looked at. So hopefully, and this is our plan, is, you know, with, you know, trying to restructure some of the facilities steering forum, as Barry mentioned, get more folks in. It's tough to get them in, you know, and keep them in. That's the, you know, that's been the challenge. And, you know, with, you know, a really, you know, exaggerated effort to get folks in, you know, really reaching out and just kind of like, my best is when I just personally ask them, you know, get as many letters and, you know, things on the website. But if I go up to somebody and I ask them, you know, you really seem like you have an eye on the schools, and we all know these people, we know the players that are out there, we know the people, you know, it's up to everybody to go out and say, you know, you know, come join this committee, you know, just even if it's for the five months when we're doing this review. But we hope to bring those things, you know, forward through, you know, the community's efforts and, you know, really, you know, in the fall and see the full document. But there are A1s on there that we should start to, you know.
Okay. Do you have a tentative schedule for finalizing it?
Not yet. So, you know, we said by the end of the fall was our initial goal.
Okay. One thought that I have is that years ago, when we started the budget input group, I believe that was formed in part by asking for parent names from the principals. Seems like if we tried to at least break this up by building, to talk about the priorities by building, that could be conducted at the building level. And then, once that's taken place, representatives or, you know, the entire groups at each building level could be invited to join the FSF for a meeting, or permanently. But I think part of what we're trying to do is get longer, more membership for longer term involved in facilities, and I think, you know, talking to the principals would be a good way to try to get some names.
Sure.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just had one comment. Steve, you kind of alluded to it just slightly when you started asking about the final draft. Important document, and certainly want to have as much input from as many stakeholders as possible, but, you know, you also don't want this to go on forever. You know, you do, you know, I would just encourage you to, I want to say rush to completion, but work towards completion and get a finalized document. Because this is on a smaller or less frequent scale, but just as important as the budget, and every year, you've got to update it. There's always stuff that's coming on, falling off. And, you know, once you have a good core document, I think you'll find it easier to keep up year to year. But it's important to get it finalized so that we've got a launching pad and we know where we need to go. And I would encourage, you know, the committee and the district not to drag it out for, you know, discussions, you know, on and on and on, because clearly there's stuff that needs to be done, and, you know, we need to start identifying it, and more stuff will come as the years tick off the calendar. More will come, and others may fall off for different reasons, but it's important we get a document finalized so that, you know, we can work from it every year. And then it'll be easy, or relatively easy, to update year to year, once you've got something.
You know, that brings an idea to my mind, is, you know, to make it a, you know, a standard piece of the agenda for the facilities steering forum, you know, once we do finalize, get, you know, cut in the sand. It doesn't stop in conversation. We continue the conversation each time and, you know, give the opportunity for folks to make those suggestions and.
Yeah, it's not a one-and-done. That's the nice thing about it. You described it best as a living document, but at some time, you know, the living document needs to go to bed for a little while and let us digest it. But recognizing it will be, it will be revised, you know, in short order, but, yeah, so.
Any more comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to enter public participation.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor. Motion carries unanimously. The public is invited to address the board. Here we have a member of the public.
Good evening, everyone. Carol Pickering, Cardinal Road. First, I want to congratulate Gary McGrath and welcome him to the school board, and Kevin for coming back to the school board. That's just so great. But mostly tonight, I personally want to say thank you to Sharon Mattias and to Tim Lee Brand for your combined eighteen years of school board service, nine years each. As, and Sharon, six of those years as board president and one year as vice president. As board members, you brought intelligence and integrity in all of your work, your efforts, your priorities, and your decisions. Each of you served in your own style as well. Sharon, listening with fewer words. Tim with a more robust tell it like it is, and always with your great sense of humor. And during your combined eighteen years on the board, this school district has changed dramatically for the better, in notable part because of your service, your care, and your leadership. You worked to create the best district possible, always with the twin goals in mind of students first and the community's ability to pay. You were always great team players, both of you, contributing on a given issue with civility and respect, always remembering your own vote was one of seven. It was a great privilege to work with both of you and for you and with you. During my tenure in Hyde Park, I served with Sharon for six years and Tim for five, of the nine each. And you will always have my respect and my admiration for a job well done. Thank you again, and you have earned all Thursday nights off. Take care and God bless.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion to close public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. Anyone like to?
And Sharon be doing, I mean, it's your last chance. You motion, you second, you mo.
No, I'm going to do the motion to adjourn. You can be sure of that.
Be careful. He might do it now.
Is there anyone like to respond to Dr. Pickering, I'm sorry, Mrs. Pickering's comments?
Left him at home.
Yes.
You want to go first?
Okay.
Well, I'm the loud one. Really? So I've been told.
Well, in response to Mrs. Pickering, it's a pleasure to have you back here, and always wonderful to see you, and it's wonderful that you still live in our community, and it's always great to have you back here in the district office and at school event, so thank you. I think just quickly, I just wanted to say thank you to people. It's been an interesting nine years. When I started, my son was in first grade, and he's going to be a junior in high school in September, so.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
As Mrs. Pickering pointed out, I think our district has gone in many positive directions, and it's great to see so many faces still here. As I look around, see Mrs. Kafka, it's nice to see that we've been able to promote people from within, have administrators have been consistent, have board meetings and board members who have been consistent as well. I think that's an important part of success and consistency. And we talked about facilities, and I think that's one of the things that I think we've been most proud of, and Carol was most proud of in her tenure, was taking those buildings that not a lot was done for many years and making them something we're all proud of. And the fact that we have a track project in process. We had a high school graduation at Havlin, I think was phenomenal, that our community has supported us in all those things. And that's why we all spend all the hours we do at these meetings, I think. So, so I thank you, and I thank everyone that sits at these tables with us and all the folks that work for the district. You know, I don't think anyone comes to work every day just for the paycheck. They come because they care about our kids and our community and helping keep our schools safe and successful. So I think that's why we do what we do, and it's great to work on a board where people do it for the right reasons, so. Thank you.
I come for the paycheck.
Carol, again, thank you. I'd like to say that I'm speechless, but everybody knows that's just not happening. People often ask, you know, why are you on the school board? You know, isn't it a thankless job? And it's certainly probably one of the most rewarding jobs you'll ever, ever have, is sitting up here. We have a great board. We get a lot of things done. And we're all up here for the right reasons. This past Saturday, I was able to give my son his diploma. And that just now gives me chills. And if that's the only personal gratification I get at a serving on a school board, that would be enough. But I also handed diplomas out to many fine students that day, and they all thanked me. I thanked them, and they all thanked me. They know that we're up here for them. And there may have been school boards in the past, I'm not even saying in Hyde Park, but in other places, that may not have had such a great relationship with the administration or with the students, but I think this board has a great relationship with its administration and with its students. And that's a very hard thing to do, but we all do it. So I want to thank everybody in the community, everybody in the administration, my other school board members, for allowing me to be part of this. Thank you.
Well said. We're up to topic eight point one, the reorganizational meeting process. So I put this on the agenda primarily to discuss one point of the meeting agenda for the reorg meeting, and that is usually the first item of business is to elect officers. In the past, that has typically been something that's been conducted without discussion during the meeting. I touched base with our attorneys just to find out the process, and discussion is an allowed part of that process. It's just that in practice, I don't think this board has really done that in the past. I didn't want to put Debbie in the position of having to make the decision about whether to allow discussion before board officer elections or not, simply because then it puts her in a position where, after the fact, she's working with people who may or may not have agreed with her. So I was hoping to discuss it here and now as to whether to allow discussion before the board officer elections in that meeting so that that relieves her from the responsibility of making the decision. Does anyone have an opinion?
Well, depending on what you mean by discussion, do you mean discussion or do you mean, I want to be president and this is why?
Well.
It's not a discussion, that's a campaign, yes, yes. Which is fine. I just was curious what the object was, that's all.
Well, I mean, the discussion can obviously take many forms. One would be, I don't think we should go for him because he's ugly and he's got big feet, and I don't think that we should.
I'm not running!
Your feet aren't that big.
Not going there.
But it could take the other form, you know, you know, a balanced discussion about who has more time or who would be the better leader. Or it could, it could be a very short campaign. But the fact that historically, I can't remember there being any discussion whatsoever, just seems kind of unnatural. So.
Can I give you my perspective, having been through it before?
Well, you're going to be part of that meeting.
You know, I don't have an issue with it at all. But it really depends each year on each board. And, you know, my view of the current board, and I certainly include Sharon and Tim in it, even though they won't be here in July, but when I say this, and I don't see Gary and I being any different, it's a very civilized board who are not here for any preconceived, because, believe me, when I first got on the board in 1994, there were factions and machinations going on behind the scenes. It was disgusting. And if some of those people are still watching, I don't care if you hear me say that. It was, it was an uncomfortable, you know, political process. You know, to your credit, all of you sitting at this table, and I hope I can continue that along with Gary, to your credit, it hasn't been like that in the last couple of years. But why you didn't have discussion historically in the years past is because you had a lot of nonsense going on behind the scenes, because, you know, people were lining up, I haven't gotten one phone call yet from anybody here going, "Oh, you voting for?" That's the nonsense that would go on, and Tim may have been part of that, or, you know, Dan if he was. No, that has been on the receiving end of those phone calls earlier in your board tenure. Dan, I know, probably was. Not many of you were here, you know, Steve may even remember, standing in the audience. Some of this stuff would go on. And even in the later years, my later years on the board, it wasn't bad. We all got along fairly well. It was pretty simple. But, but, like I said, in the nineties, it was a bitterly divided board, and there was just stuff going on like you couldn't believe. And I am all for it. I think as long as it doesn't make people uncomfortable. I think you make a very good point about, you know, having an appropriate discussion of like, okay, the time commitment and some of these things. But, yeah, I think, you know, there's absolutely no reason not to have the discussion and why it hadn't happened in the past. And then, and because, like I said, the board certainly improved over the years and isn't like that, but I think it just was by tradition, well, we just don't do that, you know, we don't talk about it. Because so far along before, it was so unpleasant and political that it was just like, we're going to wait till we get in the room and surprise everybody. You know, I was, I was first elected president in 1990, let's see, I had one year on the board, and I got on in 94, so it would have been 1995. I first got on, I first got elected president, it was a four-three vote, and oh, boy, that was a miserable year. And I did it for just one year. I did one three-year term, first year not president, second year president, third year told my vice president, or, no, actually, he didn't get it. The other guy that would like to talk a lot, and so, "Well, you want it so bad, you got it." And I don't think he enjoyed it any more than I did. He left shortly thereafter and left the board. So, yeah, that's the history of why the discussion never happens. There's no reason it can't. There's nothing that prohibits it. It's probably been by tradition, it's just been carried on for so long, and I don't have any objection to it. That's my view.
Can I make a comment or suggestion, although I won't be there? It might be helpful for especially a person like Mr. McGrath, who hasn't been involved with this board very long. If people maybe stated why they were interested in either being board president or vice president and why. It's very hard your first year not knowing people to even know how to vote. And, you know, I think I abstained at my first, I abstained my first time because I was the deciding vote, you know, in a very close choice. So just some suggestion as to help others out, you know, because it's something that we haven't discussed. And I think we've tried to do this before. And I think we've tried to do this before, but people didn't feel comfortable or whatever it might be. But, you know, typically at the July reorg meeting, there's not a lot of public there, if any. You know, so whether you want to do that that day or if you want to share information ahead of time, that just might be helpful for people to make their choices.
Well, this is ahead of time.
Yeah.
Right? It would have to be today, if it was.
Or if you want to do it, yeah. Or if you want to have the district compile information, I don't know.
Well, we're having a general reorganization meeting discussion. If we're gonna talk about that, we could talk about it now. Wasn't my intention. Right now, I'm kinda looking for guidance. Should the agenda include discussion?
I think whenever you have discussion, you can only get positives out of it. Hearing other people's views can sway you one way or the other. Much like Steve, remember when you first started, we had a discussion about you staying at the table before you were even allowed to vote. And I said, "Even if you can't vote, you could sway my vote." So I like having discussions. So based on that, I think having a discussion of who wants to, you know, one for president or vice president, I think is a very good discussion and you should have it and you should have it in the open. I think it's better here than Kevin's talking about, than on the phone, because everybody should hear what's being said. So I'd be all in favor of having the discussion in this forum.
You also have to realize that Mr. Duffy's not here, so I don't know if you want him to be a part of that as well and be able to hear all the information.
Well, the other factor is that we don't know, I don't currently know who's gonna be here for the reorg meeting. I know Mr. Duffy will be, but I've heard of others who may not be, so.
I won't.
Really?
There'll be plenty of seats. We'll get a cake.
Honestly, it is my birthday, okay? And I have a previous commitment.
We'll get a cake. There's plenty of seats.
Ice cream cake?
Sure, I love ice cream cake, you got it.
Pizza, beer, whatever you want.
Do we want to have a discussion about specific names here and now, or shall we wait until the reorg meeting?
I would encourage us probably to wait. Let's let Dan be part of that conversation and, you know, and it gives us some time to think now that you've brought it up and appropriately so, but let us all think about it a little bit, I think.
Good, okay.
But, you know, and I want to, to Sharon's point too, because she made a very good point. You know, like I said, the reason why it didn't take place in the past is because of the political machinations, but I think also, we also have to recognize that, you know, people may have differing opinions on who or who shouldn't be and, you know, we have to encourage all, each other to be civil and as well as if we're on the receiving end of that, open to any potential, I don't want to say criticisms, that's too strong of a word, but maybe, you know...
Feedback.
Feedback, yes, constructive feedback that one might receive, you know? So I think that's just, you know, that we all have to go in open-minded with that, you know, be delicate when speaking, but on the receiving end, not to take it personally either.
Sure.
It's the individual's choice. Of the seven of us collectively, we will individually decide and hopefully there's a majority for somebody, but, yeah, so.
Okay. So it sounds like we have consensus. Please plan on that. Okay. Moving on to Board of Education member recognition.
I recognize them. Those two.
I've seen them somewhere before.
Yeah.
That is rounding up all known suspects.
So in recognition of their years of service, we have plaques to present to Sharon and Tim. So the first is presented to Sharon Mattias with appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the Hyde Park Central School District for nine years of service on the Board of Education, two years as a board trustee, one year as a board vice president, six years as a board president. Please come forward.
You sound old.
Wait, wait till they get to you.
The second is for Timothy Lee Brand Senior with appreciation for his dedication and commitment to the Hyde Park Central School District for nine years of service on the Board of Education as board trustee.
You should say something about comic relief.
Yes.
At our meeting. Because that's why we have you.
Is this the part where we start to roast?
This is the roast. Would you like to lead?
Well, I was kinda thinking of things, but I'll start with Tim because the first time I ran for the school board, I lost to Tim. Badly. Badly. And I think it affected, when I finally did get on the board, I think that affected our relationship a little and I wasn't always listening to what you were saying. And it took a number of years before we actually started to agree. But we've gotten there and now you're leaving. And it took me a long time to appreciate your humor because I wasn't listening to it. So I think if that's the only thing I learned from you, I think you've really done me a really good service that, you know, you have to listen to what people are saying, no matter whether it's on the board or whatever, and let it get through your pre-prejudice or whatever that you have. And this last year, working on the policy committee, we did a lot of good stuff. And I always relied, I'm Mr. Nice Guy. Oh, well, yeah, that sounds, that's pretty good. And Tim would be, "Oh, I don't know, you know? We might have to worry about this, that and that." And you brought a lot to the meetings and I'm gonna actually miss seeing you over there, to tell you the truth. And also on the policy committee, we're gonna have to get somebody strong. For Sharon, if I could start by being slightly sexist and get away with it, I'm gonna try it anyway, is that...
I don't think I like where this is going, so I'm gonna stop.
Well, Sharon's been the only woman on the board. And I think she's got a woman's perspective on things and, which is different from us guys, you know? I had just figured that out. We'll miss that because we're now like seven men in a room, you know, making a decision. And nobody's saying, "Uh-uh," you know, "You didn't think about this or that." I got to know Sharon a little bit better when I did the Promising Pen Pals with her son. And she's a really dedicated mom and she's got a great talented family. I loved going to the baseball games, so I hope maybe when they're out and about or maybe in college, you can come back. And, or if nothing else, encourage some of your women friends to run, because I think it is a valuable thing to have more than just seven men on the board, so. And of course, what Carol said, the period when you were in the presidency was perhaps the six most productive years that this district has seen in decades, so. I think it's a measure of your leadership style, which was kinda hands-off and allowed us to go wandering around doing what we do and every once in a while, you'd pull us back, so. We will miss you. I hope that, you know, if you haven't got anything to do some Thursday night and you want to show off, come say hello. All right, the roast is over.
Can I, I just wanted to say thank you. And one of the reasons why I ran for school board in the beginning was because Kate Blossom, who was the principal at Hyde Park Elementary, came to me and said, "Just come to a meeting, I think we need some help." And I saw all the men sitting at the table and one superintendent finishing up and another superintendent sitting on the edge of the table as deputy and getting called in and said, you know, "This is something I'd like to get involved with and I think there needs to be some more women here." So I agree wholeheartedly with you. I would encourage other women to try to get in, try to get involved because, you know, I did the PTA role as well, sometimes at the same time as I was doing school board, which was challenging. And just like we love to see dads and men involved with PTA, it'd be great to see more women involved with school board, so please share that with folks you know. It's great that we have female leadership in our district and I think that's been something that's worked out very well, to have a nice mix. So we'd like to keep working in that direction wherever we could. So, thank you.
So I wanted to relay Mr. Duffy's thoughts. And I have to admit that I can't be as long-winded or as wordy as Mr. Duffy. However, I did want to relay his thoughts that he thought that Sharon's demeanor during the discussions last year about school closings was calming and was a valuable addition to the discussions. He also thought that your bridge to the PTAs was an important linkage between the school board and the community. And concerning Tim, he said that you are a built-in labor lawyer and devil's advocate and you advocate for the devil very nicely. Also, your willingness to stand alone.
True, very true.
I just want to thank both Sharon and Tim for your many years of dedication and hard work. I've really enjoyed working with you, watching when I used to sit out there and watch. And, you know, it just means a lot and the district couldn't work without the board and everything you all put into it. And you're really dedicated, you know, because of the kids, not just your own kids, but all of the kids, so, thank you. And I need to say that it was Carol Pickering who asked Kate Blossom to ask parents to come on.
I don't have anything profound to say, but, you know, Tim, I have to admit, I found you to be an extremely interesting character in the fact that, I mean, you're never afraid to ask a question that everybody else wants to ask, you know? You would ask things and I'd say, "Jeez, you know, I should ask that question. That was a good question, why didn't I ask that?" And the idea of standing alone, you're right. I mean, you know, you're willing to, you know, you've always been on, you know, work from your principles and, you know, it was never a go-along and get-along, it was, "Let's get it right. Let's get it, let's figure out why we're doing what we're doing and if it's the right thing to do." Devil's advocate, never a better one, you know, I just, it's innate. But also an advocate for the community, you know? I think that one of the things that I see and, you know, you're relentless in making sure that the community, you know, be it taxpayers, students, parents, are really getting what they should get and then they've got, you know, the representation is there clearly on every front. I mean, and in part of tonight's discussion is a good example of it, you know, that's where you're coming from, so. You know, and I appreciate it, you know, for, you know, your nine years, you know, I've been a taxpayer the whole time you've been here, I appreciate it and always felt good about it, so, and feel better about it today. So, thank you. Sharon, I think I probably learned more about the board in the years that, you know, I went to, I came to board meetings as, when you were leading the board. And always felt a certain level of civility and pragmatic approach to the way that you led the board through different discussions and a level of professionalism that I just thought was, what a huge asset and probably didn't realize just how important it was until I was sitting on this side of the table and, you know, and for that, I thank you and, and like I say, probably seeing the way that you operated made me think, you know, maybe I do want to be a part of this. This is something that, that it's time to get involved, so I thank you for that as well.
Thank you. And as I mentioned before, it's a pleasure to have you on the board. We knew you as a community member, but we're, I think we've all been thrilled that you've gotten involved and stayed involved. You know, we saw a couple of board members kinda come and go and not last, but it's great to have you involved and offer, you know, so many perspectives from your professional job, but also the fact that you're a community member and really get what we need and what we can afford to do and what we need to push and you're not afraid to ask either, which is great, so.
I'm learning from Tim. Although the other question I had, Tim, are you planning on going home now on Thursday nights? Do you, does your family know that you're not on the board anymore?
Actually, I kinda got into a habit of doing some things late Thursday nights, but I hope to keep doing. However, my wife is in the audience, so I had to come up with an alternative plan, maybe?
Going to get milk?
Yes, yes, yes.
I just want to quickly say, Tim, you've always had the ability to challenge me and that's, that helps me to think more and that's asking any question you possibly wanted and that's, you know, it helps people to think on both sides of the coin. And while Tim could play devil's advocate, I heard a lot of people say that he could switch sides real quick and play the opposite team, so, you know, it was always even. And I have to ask this one question, Tim, and throughout these years I've been sitting next to you and I've really enjoyed them because you make me laugh. Who's gonna give me the baseball scores?
Nope.
That's a little secret between me and Tim. We always watch where the Yankees were, but thank you. And then Sharon, your leadership and patience, you know, all the time that you put in, your level-headedness and ability to think on your feet real quick and really support for true good improvements has been such a part of this district. And I'm, you know, excited to see you both go, you know, you were there when I started and, you know, that's a long time ago and I've been through a lot, so I just want to thank you for everything you've done because it's been a long ride, so.
Thank you.
You're appreciated and we'll be missed.
You're much appreciated.
Yeah, thanks.
Sharon, you got on the board a couple of years after me and it was refreshing because the women's outlook was a very nice change for me and you sat there and listened and contributed so well and then you became the president and ran it through some tough times, but also, as Doug said, it was extremely productive, that era. And I really enjoyed it. And Tim, going back to what Kevin was talking about, the behind-the-scenes things that went on in boards gone by, I thought, "Tim was there then, he's gonna bring it back." And you didn't. You're out front, you're not behind the scenes, you're totally not who I thought you would be. And I have had a great time serving next to you. And you both put up with my stupid little doodles all along, so thank you.
On that side of the table.
Yeah.
This is a good side of the table, I don't know if you guys voted for...
We have fun over here.
I'm not having any fun over here yet, we'll work on it.
I know.
I just wanted to also, I mean, I sat here and I apologize that I can't remember because, boy, I mean, the 90s and right out and up through the early 80s, as I like to call them, early part of the 2000s, I am fairly certain I never served with Tim on the board. I think we always passed in the night.
We did for like, I was in 99 to 02.
Oh, okay, so maybe it was one year then? All right. Because I didn't, yeah, I didn't think it was much. I know that there was a, you know, "That's it, I'm out of here and I took your place and it's felt like anyway." And then six years later, I said, "That's it, I'm out of here" and you came back on the board. And now, six years later, you said, "That's it, I'm out of here" and then I walk again. So we're like the ships that pass the night. I thought we had one year. Yeah, there seems to be a pattern. I thought we had one year, but I couldn't remember. But anyway, I've certainly, I've certainly observed you over the years, you know, attending meetings, watching Channel 22 and really, to echo what everybody else says, you know, Tim, you always have a pragmatic approach, an honest, upfront approach. There's no hidden agenda, you know where you stand with Tim and I do thank you for your service. And thank you for agreeing to come back. You bailed me out the last go-around because if I recall, that election was uncontested, it was you, Sharon and Dan. And who knows where we would've been if you hadn't come out, because I really needed to take some time, you know, with my family and myself. And, you know... And, you know, anyway, so, thank you for really great years of service on the board. You've done a nice job. Sharon, you know, what can I say? You joined the board, and not too long after, I said, geez, I think, you know, Sharon might make a candidate for vice president. And, you know, we brought her in, and after I finally said I had enough of my last year of last go-around, you know, I stepped down, and it was a perfect segue to, you know, move you in, and I think that was a, and it certainly wasn't only my decision, but I was glad to be a part of that decision because you've done a wonderful job over the last couple of years as well. When you were president, carrying the torch, I felt very good about leaving the board. It wasn't because I was fed up. You know, I was trying to finish a master's degree. I had a lot going on. It was just, it was time. Six years is a long time. I don't have to tell you either one of you. And it was, I felt good about where we were with who was on the board. I felt good about who was here as a superintendent. I was very comfortable stepping away, and you were a large part of making me comfortable so I could step away. So, and to echo Doug's point, you know, I was a little nervous when he started, but I know what he was saying, and I wholeheartedly agree. It is a shame that we are losing, you know, I do think there needs to be a little bit more balance. And so, I hope, you know, maybe you can go out and beat the drum, the drums a little bit and try to encourage some, really, any folks to run for the board, but particularly women. I think they do lend a great perspective, and we really should be a lot more balanced than we are. And, you know, I certainly hope, for example, that Toby would make another run again next year. You know, that, you know, I've been thinking a lot about it. I was really stepped in because I thought nobody was going to run, that there weren't going to be enough to cover. I knew you and Tim were stepping away, and I was really afraid of what would happen. And I still think that could happen, so we need to really try to drum up some other interest in other candidates. And I guess we all need to do that ourselves, too, and as I think Steve said at once, look for your replacement. And I think that's very good advice, so I do, I encourage both of you, actually, maybe if you know of people, try to find your replacements. Obviously, not for this go-around, but for next year and going forward, so, thanks.
I'd like to wish you both well, even though I don't really know you. Just got to learn your names in the last month or so, but I've heard some great comments about you guys and from Mrs. Pickering and the board. I'm sure there's more out there. And again, I wish you well, and I hope I can fill the seat nearer what you guys did in the last nine years. Thanks.
So, I guess I get the last word. I've learned from you, Tim. I want to thank both of you. It's been such a pleasure to work with you. I hear a lot of horror stories from other district clerks about the kind of boards that they have to work with, and I'm very fortunate to have never experienced that, so I wish you both the best and hope that you'll both stay in touch.
Not quite the last word. So, I just wanted to point out that I had several years to come up to speed without the board really changing composition. And, you know, I was the new guy on the board for several years, frankly, and I think that was one of the great things about this board, was the fact that it was stable. There was a lot of civility. There was a lot of experience. So, I had the opportunity to watch Sharon operate as president for several years. And there were many, many, many times when I said, holy cow, how did she do that? How did she find something to say in that opportunity that was just right? How did she find the way to lead us to that conclusion? So, I respect your service and your ability to lead, your business acumen. You have provided some very wise and experienced words when it comes to, well, I would say that I think we may have heard more from you in exec than we did in public meetings. And I think that you always spoke up at the right time and had the right thing to say. So, again, I learned a great deal from you, and certainly, serving as president for the last year, I was not surprised at how much time it took. But still, adding on top of the observations I'd made before, I was still continuously surprised at how easy you made it look. Mr. Liebrand. Yes, you're Mr. Liebrand now.
You're in trouble.
The thing I learned from you was that you can argue the opposite point of view from someone. I'm talking about myself. I can argue with you and then walk away and not be angry about it. And you can argue it passionately, and that was a valuable piece of personal growth. And I found it simultaneously something to respect and infuriating, the way you would stand alone on some issues without budging, but at moments, it didn't seem like you were really listening either. But I always thought that the experience you brought to the table often came from unexpected points of view. And often, I think, your experience has saved this board and this district from situations that would have been less pleasant. Do we have anything else that we'd like to say? Very well.
A jerk.
Congratulations to both of you. We'll get there.
When did they get their first retirement check?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the mail.
It's a double check this week.
We're going to take your salary and triple it for your retirement.
Please stop.
All right. Unfinished business, item 9.1. Adopt a calendar for the 2013 and 14 Board of Education meetings. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second consideration and adopt policy 6830 and 4321 dot four dash R as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda as described in the agenda.
I wanted to ask that we remove one person because we have a question on the certification area that we couldn't get answered this evening.
Okay.
So, I'd like to remove Valerie Barnes until we can clarify that certification, if we could.
Okay. I'll accept that as a motion to modify the resolution. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Does everybody understand what we're doing? All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, I'll accept a motion for the modified resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda as modified?
I just want to recognize Jill Parsella, who's in the audience tonight, who's just approved the consent agenda, so that's Jill. She's going to be our new energy specialist for Ed Park. All the information about synergistics, so welcome aboard.
Right. Okay. Without further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve and arrange special education placements as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consultant agreement for special education services as described in the agenda.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll entertain a motion to approve refunding bond resolution as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
A quick, I'm seeing that two-thirds have to do this, so I just want people to know that four of the six have to be in favor of this to pass before we take the vote, so.
And it's done by roll call.
Right, so.
Understood.
Okay, I'm just letting.
I'm happy you pointed that out. It's a roll call vote. Two-thirds must approve to pass.
Actually, does four, it's actually the entire board.
At four, two.
It's entire, so.
Hmm? Yeah, four out of seven.
Yeah.
That's why I'm just, if you guys want to, like, postpone this for another two weeks or whatever, I'm just, I'm trying to be out front.
I understand what you're saying.
It's okay. We're the only two that are going to vote.
But it also doesn't matter because if, you know, it's, there's nothing that prevents us from doing it later if we want to. And I know, if you want to go on the record, I'm just saying, I, you know, I, it just, because I certainly don't have a vote, but it just, it won't matter because we may want to take a pause and think about it a little bit more anyway, and then do it again, so, you know.
Because it's a weird, two-thirds vote needed, and we don't have them often.
Right, okay. Duly noted.
Mr. Heater?
Nay.
Mr. Liebrand?
Nay.
Ms. Mattias?
Aye.
Mr. Minnemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Sheldon?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries, four to two. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the bond resolution to finance acquisition of school buses and vans as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the textbooks, AP Biology and AP Statistics.
I'm sorry, and I probably shouldn't, I wasn't really paying attention there. If you're adopting a bond resolution, does that have to be a roll call vote?
For the buses? I thought it was kind of strange that we did one without the other.
I did two.
I actually was prepared to do a roll call.
Yeah, I think that has to be a roll call vote. I apologize. I should have spoken up, paying attention, but I just kind of let it slip by, but, because it's, because you're doing a bar, you know.
Point of order accepted.
Sorry.
So, we had a motion and a second and an oral vote. I think the motion and a second still stands. At this time, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Heater?
Aye.
Mr. Liebrand?
Aye.
Ms. Mattias?
Aye.
Mr. Minnemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Sheldon?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Motion still carries. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the textbooks, AP Biology and AP Statistics.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unless someone wants a roll call vote?
I'm good.
All right. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve terms and conditions of employment for assistant superintendents as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to establish a tax surchargeary reserve fund as described in the agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid for capital projects under Phase II Roman numeral five, North Park ceiling replacement as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve bid awards for capital projects under Phase II A, Section VI, Havlin Middle School Pipes, Stage I as described in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve bid award for capital projects under Phase III A, Section III, Athletic Field Upgrades as described in the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Just wanted to point out that this is the motion that will order, place the order for the replacement of the athletic field scoreboard.
That's important.
Very exciting moment.
A quick question, Wayne. What happens with the Pepsi? Because they had the pouring rights locked into this.
Those pouring rights have been over for a long time.
Do we put out for bids for other vendors?
Probably not going to get involved in that, just based on my experiences. I wouldn't recommend, you know, but we could certainly have a conversation another time.
No, we can't. Y'all can.
It's a thorny one, but certainly.
You can make an appointment.
Yeah. I'll call your secretary.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's contract as described in the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the creation of positions. This is a .5 FTE Special Education Teacher position and a 2.0 FTE Teaching Assistant Positions effective for next school year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the elimination of non-instructional employees.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to re-enter public participation.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The public is invited to address the board.
He's not going to agree with me. I don't care.
He's going to say, brace yourself.
Good evening. Steve Hughes, District Resident. I just had a point of clarification on 11-3, the refunding. I believe I heard that passed, correct? The note says that it must be adopted by two-thirds of the vote, by a two-thirds vote of the entire board, which should be five people. So, but there were four again, four for and two against.
That's a good point.
Okay, I just saw, not going crazy.
Seeing as there's no other members of the public who want to address the board, I'll entertain a motion to close public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So, I believe that the vote did in fact fail. It was merely my interpretation of the vote that was incorrect. I'm sure that the board clerk, it did fail.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two-thirds of the board, not a full attendance.
Here, but two-thirds of the, it's two-thirds of seven, not two-thirds of six.
Right. It's the full board, whether they're here or not.
Doesn't that scale back as one member?
Nope.
No.
It's the full board.
Full board, not the board president.
Only, only, I think, if there was a vacancy, but lest I knew Mr. Duffy's still with us.
Yeah. So, I'm sure that the district clerk would have caught that and corrected me after the fact. Very good.
But it's good for people watching on TV that they do understand how that vote went, so, yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
And on my last day, I have to agree with Mr.
See, you won. You did win.
You're buying the beer. Board Subcommittee Reports? Going twice. Upcoming meetings. The next meeting is the reorganizational meeting, Tuesday, July 9th, 6:00 PM, this office, this meeting room, pardon me. Yes. There is no need for a second executive session?
But before we get off of that, I know I heard Doug kind of whisper, but can we just get clarification? I mean, I don't mean to put people on the spot, but who is, who is going to be there at the reorg meeting? You know, let's.
Who is, who is going to be there?
I will be there.
I'll be there.
Okay, so, and we know Dan's going to be there. So, it looks like, it looks like we'll have the full board. Oh, good.
You don't want to be the rookie and not there. It's bad.
They'll torture you.
Actually, being a rookie there isn't a whole lot of fun either, but...
You'll be stuck with Bozies.
Okay.
It's like the last rookie.
I like...
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I don't know.
All in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned.